Welcome to this League of Women Voters Forum for the Orting City Council Positions. I'm Noel Haggins of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County, and I will be moderating. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 101 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone aged 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on our membership, go to our website at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. All candidates for Orting, I'm sorry, Orting City Council have been invited multiple times. The candidates who are with us tonight, or this evening, are Todd Gunther for Position 1 and Scott Drennan for Position 7. Thank you both for being here. You have agreed to our ground rules, which among other things say that you will not discuss each other in your answers. Will you please verbally agree to this important ground rule now?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Thank you. Candidates have two minutes for opening statements, 90 seconds for each question, and one minute for closing statements. Our timekeeper is Terri Baker. She will signal you when you have 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop. At the final signal, you may finish a short sentence. Candidates, please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourselves when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. Some excellent questions were sent to us in advance. If those in the audience have questions this evening, you can text them to 206-310-8965. The first opening statement will be given by Todd and then Scott. The order of questions will rotate. Todd, will you give us your opening statement for no more than two minutes, please?
Noel, we have...
Hello, Don. Are you a candidate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate your joining. I didn't know you were coming. Don, you're running for what position, please?
3.
Okay, so Don Tracy is with us as a candidate for Position 3 on the Orting City Council. So the order of... Don, I'm going to ask, take a minute to ask you to please agree verbally to the important ground rule that says you will not discuss your opponents, but simply speak to your own issues. Could you do that verbally for us now?
Yes, I agree.
And Don, can you turn on your camera?
Yes.
So we can see. Okay, let's go ahead. With it done. Okay, great, Don. We can see you now. Thank you. So we were just about to start our opening statements. And the opening statement for no more than two minutes. The first opening statement will be given by Todd, followed by Scott, and then by Don. So, Don, go ahead and mute yourself. I don't know how much of the introduction you heard, but mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. And please keep your camera on gallery view. So Todd, now we are ready for your opening statement, please.
Well, thank you, everyone, and welcome, Mr. Tracy. I think I know you. So first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters tonight. It is profound to think about how your organization started in the 1920s during the suffrage movement. So thank you for all you've done over the decades. So wow, this has been an amazing six years for me. I've been in office for two terms now. Serving as Orting's councillor has been one of the most joyful and challenging experiences of my life. As a little background, I joined the Navy when I was young and spent several years living in Japan. Afterwards, I became a computer programmer in Seattle and Bellevue. By and by, though, I wondered if that's what I would really be most proud of at the end of my life. So I changed careers to work with children and disabilities. And I was up until recently employee of the Orting School District for five years. COVID took care of that career. And now today, I work with another vulnerable group and the manager of Washington's first tiny home village for homeless veterans here in Orting. For me personally, three things define me as a city councillor. One, to be a person of action. I've seen so many come in talking about the many things that they hope to do, but then end up doing little. Citizens deserve someone who will research ideas and burden the midnight oil for them. Number two, for once, citizens actually deserve to be put first, and I've tried to do that. Not just on a slogan sign, but going out and having pie and coffee at Tim's, putting together coffee meetings with citizens, and then actually voting on their side, having the courage to vote on their side versus maybe what you feel personally for being your side. Third, citizens deserve councillors who conduct themselves with kindness and grace. Children watch us on TV, and what they see from us is what they take into their world. I saw this happening when I first got into office, and I made sure to implement the city's first code of conduct.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll get to hear more from you in a moment. All right, Scott, your opening statement, please.
Thank you again for putting this on, putting this forum on this evening. The work you do is very valuable. My name is Scott Drennan. I'm a city council member, position number seven. I'm married. I work for King County in water and wastewater treatment. I moved to Orting in 1992 after graduating from the University of Montana and then Green River Community College in water and wastewater technology to raise my family. The irony of it all is I purchased a home in 1905, that was built in 1905 with deep roots to the community. Little did I know how deep those roots would need to grow with the community, and I inherited that. Building it and restoring it lovingly, and I shared that same passion with my city. I became involved with the city when we needed, under mandate, to upgrade our water and wastewater system. And I was a subject matter expert, and at that time, our community had a lot of volunteerism. And it was the spirit that really captured me and I carried into in my public service. We looked at our city as we were facing extreme growth, and we had to write a comprehensive plan for the Urban Growth Act. And we looked at what would we like to be in 20 years. Little did I know that I would still be pushing that vision 20 years later of a small town that was friendly to live in, safe to live in, and a place where we all would like to be. So it was something that was unique, and I felt part of something very special, and to this day, I still carry that forward. Some of my big achievements have been, of course, working on the comprehensive plan, the architectural and design ordinance to help preserve that small-town feel. Our Orting Foothills Trail, which was extremely special and hard to imagine, it was very controversial at the time, but today it's been welcomed by everybody. I became also involved with the Bridge for Kids, and this year, we adopted and completed or received funding for to build an evacuation bridge. So so many things, so many accomplishments, but yet so much more to do. I just appreciate this opportunity to be here this evening with all of you and hope that you will vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Don, your opening statement for no more than two minutes, please.
Thank you also for having me on this forum. I was born and raised in this town, where my wife and I have raised two children and are helping to raise four grandchildren with our families. I was in the service and I have enjoyed a couple different businesses in this town, and we're definitely successful. And I use those experiences that I have learned through those businesses to help serve in the community and lead those organizations to success. Throughout the years, I've seen a lot of changes in this town, some good and some not so good, and that's kind of the way it is. I want to be in a safe community and with great schools and where I can raise my kids and my grandkids in a safe community. And I look forward to doing that for future generations. And again, I would like to thank you for having me on.
Thank you, Don. Thank you very much. The order of questions will rotate. Again, if you have a question in the audience, you can text to 206-310-8965. The order of questions will rotate. Don, you're going to have the first opportunity, and the question is, how should Orting best address housing and growth?
You were breaking up on that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. How should Orting best address housing and growth?
I think there's more to addressing the housing and the growth than just building houses or apartments or whatever. Our infrastructure in this city is definitely at the top of the list as far as what needs to happen before we expand into some major building. The roads in and out of this city are jammed constantly. Our schools are overcrowded. We need to really work hard with the schools to pass the bonds to give these kids some classrooms and the proper schooling. As far as building more houses, the county is pretty much stopped the growth by not allowing us to expand into the county ground. And so building new houses has to be done on the ground that we have in the city. And we have to be careful that we don't allow more houses than need be in the city with the ground that we have to build on.
Thank you. So the same question to Scott. Scott, how should Orting best address housing and growth?
Thank you. Over the last 20 years, we've seen unprecedented growth, not only in Orting, but in the region. When I first moved here, we all wanted to preserve a way of life with our large yards, our gardens, and really a single-family residential community. With all of the growth, as councilmember, as Mr. Tracy pointed out, we've also experienced a tremendous amount of traffic and impact on our city from that growth. So it's something we really need to be aware of as we go forward. But another item that's really come up that's not talked about as much is that our housing diversity needs to change. We need to be able to close those gaps for people to be able to get into a home and to have a quality of life here in the city. So some of that is adjusting some of our building codes to encourage downtown living, pedestrian-friendly type of living, so so much reliant upon cars. Something that's affordable for seniors and for starters alike to move into town. So that could, that could take the form of different types of housing that we have. More smaller cottage-style housing, homes that have shared areas. Things that have definitely changed in this, in this region. I really don't want to see a lot of apartments, but I do want to see some different opportunities for housing, and especially in the downtown corridor where we could share housing and businesses alike and encourage economic growth at the same time. So it's a complicated problem, and it's left some people out of the housing market that I hope that we can resolve through planning and policy here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And Todd, the same question, please.
Yes. As councilmember Drennan just said, it's a complicated problem, not just for Orting, but for every city around us. It's also, as such, also a free conversation amongst state councils and other committees. We are heavy on higher-class housing and not so good, not so great on apartments and lower-class housing. And that's not fair. That's not fair for, for those just getting into high school in Orting, you know, graduating as a cardinal from high school and wanting to stay in town, loving our town, but they have a problem finding an apartment. Or even beyond that, staying as a young adult and starting their career. You know, difficult finding a place to stay in Orting. And so they move out, and they move out to somewhere else. Of course, doesn't save our own families and money here in our town. So we're looking at different options, ADUs and B&Bs and other options to hopefully bring a greater balance to this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Scott, you'll be first on this next question. Should Orting pay to join the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners? Why or why not?
That's something that I would support. I think, I feel that, that we need to be able to look at this as a regional type of an issue with housing. And that shared experience, shared knowledge that South Housing would bring to us, I think would add value in our decisions. Because as councilmember Gunther pointed out, is that it is a complicated problem. And I think that it's something that, that working as a regional perspective is, would be very helpful. All this, and all this said, is that we are still a sovereign city, and we will make our ultimate choices of what's best for our citizens. But, but we want to make those best choices. We want to know what opportunities are out there and understand what our partners in the region are doing to address some of the housing issues that we're, that we're facing. And I think there's a lot of value to that for our city and for the citizens, future citizens of Orting, and to make sure that we include everybody in our citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Todd, you're next for that same question.
Yes, I too agree. As a councillor, I've been here for six years, and I attended many, many meetings on affordability and housing. And the citizens are always telling you politicians, you need to do something. You just not warm seats. You need to get out there and do something. And cities oftentimes don't do anything. So I agree with joining this kind of association and others because it's, it's us trying to find solutions to actually do something. And Orting has done some great things. But as a previous speaker said, we can do more by reaching out and joining other folks in the problem and the solution.
Thank you, Todd. Don, your answer, please.
Yes, thank you. Not being on the council at this time, I don't know all the ins and outs. I did go to a council meeting where the discuss, some of the discussions were made. So I don't know all of it. For what I do know, I am not sure that I would step in and join immediately from the sounds of it, and I may be wrong. Because again, I'm not in the council, so I don't know everything that is available there. Some sound good, some to me didn't sound so good. It would be more of a wait and see, because see how many other cities join this. I know at the time, I think there was only one other city that had joined. And so I don't know the results of what it, what that means to that city or to whether it was positive or negative. So I would be more on the side of holding back and seeing where it went and then opting into it later on possibly.
Thank you, Don. Todd, you'll be first for this next question. How would you, as a city council member, work with the school district?
So the question is, how would I work with the school district?
Yes.
I am the only city councillor that has worked with the school district personally. I spent the last, prior to this year, I worked for five years for the Orting School District. I got to know the principals, I got to know the teachers, the administrators, I got to know and enjoy the entire staff. So I'm all for that closeness. A lot of things, a lot of great ideas come out of hitting heads with other folks. And the schools have a lot of great ideas. In addition, they also have our school resource officer, which is very important to the public safety concerns of our city. So, so very much support, yes.
Scott, again, the question is, how would you, as a city council member, work with the school district?
Yeah, thank you for the question. As you know, they're a separate government entity, but yet we work in parallel together on many of the other problems in the area. One good example would be the pedestrian bridge that's going, that will be going over SR 162, where we'll be building a bridge to directly benefit the students needing to cross Highway 162. But where I've worked with them in the past is working with them on policy and codes and able, capable to help them so they can move forward with meeting the needs of their students. So some of them might be as simple as transportation issues, getting in and out of the schools with turn lanes, enlightened crossings, bridges to get access to the school. Some of it might be with utilities, where we work with them on waiving some utility impact fees to have them partner with them on education programs for the environment for kids to understand the, the value of our waters and the work that we do as a city. So we've worked with them in the past, and I've really enjoyed it. And where we can fill those gaps that happen outside of school, such as with parks and recreation, I think those are very key, and partnering with the schools to make that happen. I talked about volunteerism in early days of Orting. That's where it can really take, spark, take hold, is partnering with the schools to build a parks and recs for after-hours to give these kids something to do in the community and partner with them and be that, that leadership that they need in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, the same question, please.
Yes. It's definitely an important thing for the council to be in communication and work hard with the school district. My wife has been a teacher at the Orting School District for 20, 23, 24 years. My daughter has chose to teach here also. So I definitely have family. My grandkids are in sports there now. It's, there's a lot of history there, and it's something that needs to happen. The city council needs to move with the school board and getting some of these, helping get some of these bonds moved through so that the facilities can be upgraded, so that the classrooms aren't so crowded. That's even now with COVID, the way it is, the classrooms, you know, with all the restrictions and stuff, they're finding it hard to meet the needs of those students, keeping them safe, along with keeping the instructors safe also. So I would definitely work with the school board to do anything that we can do as a council to help them get the bonds passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, you'll be next for this, you'll be first for this next question. How would you reprioritize the budget if you are elected?
Well, I would have to see what the budget is first, and I don't know that it even needs reorganization. And I, without knowing what it is, it's, it's hard to know if, you know, if it needs to be fixed. We need to go through it and see exactly what it is. Make sure we're moving in the right direction for the city, that we don't put excessive burdens on our citizens with how we tax them, things like that. And so it's, it would be something that I would have to review and go through and, and give my opinion on. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. The next, the same question, please.
Great, thank you. As you know, I've been involved with the budget process since 1995. And one of the things I admired the most was our forefathers' foresight in setting up large reserves in the event of natural disaster emergencies. That carried us through a high-growth period. We were able to get a lot of the facilities that we needed during that time as a result of that good governance. Those funds are, are becoming taxed, are depleted because we have had to have so much, so many needs. So in 2017, Mayor Penner and myself, as he was a council member at the time, we balanced a budget, 100% balance, which was incredible for the time. And we ran balanced budgets ever since then. No, no reserve spending. One of the things which I've done to keep rates down and put as priorities is fiscal planning, where we set up reserves, such as the Public Works Building, where we started a reserve in 1998, and we paid for the building cash, 100% paid for by 2017, 2018. So I think that the management of the funds that we have is extremely important. And also with the asset management that we have, that we plan our expenses, and we know that we have a limited resources and live within our means and our budget. So those were my priorities would be, is to protect that for all our citizens and then keep the taxation and rates, utility rates in an affordable place so people could really truly enjoy their, their livelihood here in Orting.
Thank you. Thank you. Todd, the same question, please. Todd, Todd, you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, I would start off by saying Mr. Tracy is exactly right. We did not have the budget yet. I believe our first meeting is coming up here very shortly, and then we'll find out about what is in it from the mayor. Having said that, however, a couple items are important to me. One, we need to preserve the monies that we've already set aside for better parks in Orting. We have our families going to Sumner for their zip line and up on the hill. And because our parks have, they don't have a lot of attraction, and I think we need to build that up and increase it. So we've already set aside money for a zip line. So hopefully we reserve, we'll preserve that. The other thing we need to preserve is, councilmember Drennan has said, is our reserves. We need to build those up, and I'm 100% for that. You never know, you need something until a rainy day, and we need to make sure Orting is, is preserved going forward for anything that comes up. Thank you.
Scott, what is your plan to increase pedestrian and bicycle networks that link to the Foothills Trail, as suggested in the draft comprehensive plan of 2015?
Great, thank you. You touched on something that's very near and dear to me, the pedestrian trail. I was involved with the, the Foothills Trail from the very beginning at the ribbon cutting, as a matter of fact, for the Orting Miracle Mile. But that was just the first mile that linked us. Next year, we'll be building a bridge to cross between the northwest portion of town and the Foothills Trail, which will link all those citizens in Carver River's edge and on that side of the city to the Foothills Trail. But what I think is really important that people miss out on is that, that we tend to focus on the transportation portion, but a large part of our population is not of driving age and also a senior, the senior community, which rely on pedestrian-only transportation. So I would look to fund our pedestrian pathways and highways using the Transportation Benefit District to include that as part of our planning. When we look at planning for roads and for road maintenance, that we look at our most-used pedestrian walkways through the city corridor and collectors to bring them into our pedestrian highway, which is really the Foothills Trail. It's our economic draw for our city. People come to our city to walk and ride on our trail and enjoy it. But why not pull all of our, our connectors to the city and make, connect our community better to that trail? Because it is something that, that unites all of our communities together and that we all enjoy. So that would be a top priority for me, and I would look to funding that through the Transportation Benefit District to provide that transportation to mainly focus to help those who cannot, who cannot drive, who need to rely on pedestrian pathways. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, same question, please.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. I am for that. Orting's pride of this is your bicycling destination from throughout the region. So anything that we can do to build on, on that natural asset of ours, I am 200% for. I just recently bought an e-bike myself, and I've been... and I've been, you you notice that a lot of people have been buying e-bikes. So we're becoming even more important. Very, I'm very proud of that part. Of the city, so.
Thank you. Don, the same question, please.
Could you repeat the question?
What is your plan to increase pedestrian and bicycle networks that link to the foothills trail as suggested in the draft comprehensive plan of two thousand fifteen?
I haven't seen the draft comprehensive plan. But the trail is a very important part of the city of ordering. I know there's issues with parking for it. When the, when we get decent weather and sunny weather like we had this summer, there's, there's issues with parking at the post office, people with bikes. So people wanting to go to the post office can't get into the post office, things like that. So all that has to be looked at to to help people have the ability to use that. Not everybody rides in or out of town on a bike. They drive in here and park and then ride their bike further up the trail or or wherever they go. It's very important for this town. It's, it brings economy to this town. So I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question has already been touched on a little bit, but I'm going to give you a chance to expand. I sort of like a maximum of one minute on this question, which has to do with housing. Does ordering have diverse housing stock? Which was also recommended in the draft comprehensive plan to serve residents of different economic levels? If not, what can be done to diversify? A couple of you have already touched on that. If there's anything you'd like to add, please do so now. And Todd, you'll be first. If there's anything you would like to add on that question.
Yes, nothing to add other than my my previous comments on it. Thank you.
And Todd, I'm getting a message that your bandwidth is low, but I don't know if there's anything you can do. You've been in and out just a little bit as we, as we heard you on the last question, just a little difficulty understanding you, but so I just do the best you can there. Scott, anything you want to say about diverse housing stock? And what can be done to diversify further?
Yeah, I think that we found ourselves a little bit weighted a little heavy on the the single family housing, in particular with some of the larger multi-story housing developments that you'll see, where we need to diversify that and encourage more single level housing for seniors type of thing, or for for small families, starter homes for families to get into. But on top of that, we need to also look at, look at our codes and policies to find ways for the way that our housing is already changing. You know, where we're having, we're sharing housing above businesses, let's say partners downtown. We're possibly having people that are renting rooms and homes or more duplexes made from some of our existing housing stocks. So we're really having to review those and then see the impacts on the neighborhoods and how can we make this work? And in particular, one of my favorite codes is the cottage housing, the small starter homes to to allow people to to still have a small home and and have a neighborhood feel. So there's, I think there are a lot of opportunities out there, but we need to move away from more of the large, single family residential homes and look at a more diversified inventory of housing within the city limits.
Thank you. And finally, Don, on the same question.
Yes, I believe in the diversity of of the housing in ordering. We definitely need it. But what goes along with that is when you do that, you increase the population and then we look at what it does to the schools and the roads coming in and out. So it's, it's not just something that you you know, we'll build a whole bunch of these cottage homes or whatever it might be, which are good things. But we got to watch what it does as far as overcrowding the schools or the road in and out, the traffic in and out. They're definitely deterrents to people wanting to move here, or more importantly, that businesses moving here also. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And Don, you're going to be first on this next question. How can the city best protect the shoreline and prevent vulnerable zones from flooding?
Well, I believe the city has done some of that already. And I believe, again, not being in on the council, I I don't know all the things in the making, but some of the secondary dykes they put in are are supposedly to keep the rivers from overflowing into the city. It's always been a problem here. I've lived here a long time and I remember water flowing through the streets. It's actually improved. They've learned from some of the things that were done in the past that it didn't, didn't do a lot for it, but the, a lot of that is what the county does upstream with the rivers too. How they control it or don't allow things to be controlled. And so some of it is out of the city's control. But what's in the city's control, we need to look at all the available assets that we can muster to continue to keep the water out of the city streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, same question and don't forget to unmute, please.
Thank you. Yes, so the issue, this issue is right now being discussed by the city council on two different areas. One, the carbon levy. And the other one is the Puyallup levy. The city is as well, as as Mr. Tracy mentioned, the city has improved its ability to protect itself from the floods. But right now Pierce County is looking at at changing the position of those levies. Dramatically, I might add. So the the trailer starts off at Calistoga Park that people are used to and enjoy would be significantly changed. And the same one that folks are, the bike trail, leaving town on the carbon side, they want significantly change. This is causing council to be very upset and pushing back properly. Doing this would would change the entire destination of so very, very important. And I hope citizens become involved and and speak to your representatives about this issue.
And Scott, the same question. Thank you, Todd. Scott.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. We developed a master shoreline master plan to to address housing near the rivers. It's always challenged. I can honestly say that since since its inception, there's always a need to push development closer and closer into those flood zones. With that said, we have good protective policies in place to protect the shoreline. The difficulty is balancing that with the enjoyment of people using our rivers and and what it brings to our community. It's one of our biggest draws, people to walk our river system, to fish on our rivers, on the Carbon River in particular, to cycle on our trail system. So extremely important. It's a difficult balance. The the move, the direction here recently has been to go with setback levies for salmon recovery. And that's, that's nice. It gives a lot wide berth to the river and allows for settling and slowing of the water. But it also impacts the contact and enjoyment that we have with our with our river system. So right now we're coming up with solutions. I think that that not only can we can we push back against the county, but we have to offer solutions. And we've offered solutions on the Carbon River side to protect our foothills trail and also to protect our community from flooding in that area. And on the Puyallup River side, we're working with them to protect homeowners that will be displaced as a result of of shifting our levies and then finding another solution to keep their homes protected and and still still have access to the river. And so it's complicated, but we're doing the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, you'll be first for this question. How do, how do you evaluate the current services for people who are experiencing homelessness in ordering? What additional services are needed and how should they be provided?
Wow, I think you've touched on a topic that is is a part of the world that we're living in today. It it is a reality. There's a number of home people that have been left behind with all of the 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 social economic changes that we've seen in this region and everything. I think that it's a diverse group of people. I think that you have everywhere from single mothers and children and families without homes to to older elderly people without homes, to mentally disabled, to all sorts of different groups. So we need to look at each group individually. Personally, I think that having been raised in a family of with foster kids, I see the impacts on families that are displaced from home. So I really have a soft spot. I really have a focus on getting those children to a stable environment. Some of the services that I think that we can provide first is is to work with our regional partners, because this isn't just a city of ordering solution that we need to work with with our neighboring communities to have consistent codes and policies and and avenues where we can provide support for them. Here in our city, our food bank is one of our biggest assets, but we also need a clothing bank. We also need to find ways to connect people that are displaced from homes to get housing when it's cold, to get health services. Because we want those people backed up and be in a protect productive part of our society and we want them working. So we need to be able to find, you know, so many things for them to get them back and be contributing back into our community again. So complicated problem, but I think that's something that we need to really focus and and get a handle on and work towards. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, same question, please.
This is a question that could take a lot of minutes to answer. Because as as Councilmember Drennan mentioned, it's a big one in every city. So a lot could be said. But but briefly, the question about how how do we feel about the services towards the homeless in ordering? I will answer and say that the folks ordering should be very proud of ordering in this area. That sounds a little weird. But our city has eight thousand people and yet has one of the most successful programs of rehousing the homeless in the entire state. Even though cities ten times its size, we have a soldier's home that has been housing the homeless since the Civil War. We also now have a brand new Veterans Village for the homeless in ordering as well. We have done a tremendous lot for for the homeless and consequently we don't have the problems that other cities have, which personally makes me very proud. I've been homeless. It's been in my story has been in the Los Angeles Times. It was a very, very dark time on the streets for about a year. And I got to see the issues from both sides. One, from being a politician, solving homeless problem and one from being a homeless person myself. And having been there, I'm proud of what ordering is is doing in this particular area. And of course, more can be done. But I'd give ourselves an A plus mark for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Don.
Yes, thank you. I I totally agree with both council members. This is a broad issue. And like Mr. Drennan said, it's it's almost an individual. It has to be approached, I believe, on an individual basis. People are homeless for a hundred different reasons. And working, just supplying them with certain things isn't, isn't necessarily what the homeless need. They may need jobs, they need housing, they need clothing, they need food. There's a lot of different things. And I think as a as a council, we need to work hard with. In this town, we have Recovery Cafe, which works with them. We have church organizations that work with them. All those things, the food bank and the council, the city of ordering needs to work with each and every one of those to give any help that is needed to those individuals. And I think it it has to almost be a personal relationship to get in to know exactly what's going on in order to benefit those people, because it's a problem not only for the city, but for them. Their lives are disrupted and they need to get back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Todd, you're next. You're first for this next question. Because ordering is a considerable distance from most places of work, residents depend on cars. However, data shows the transportation is the biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Pierce County. How would you address the need to reduce transportation emissions?
Who's the first one up?
I'm sorry. You're you are, Todd.
Oh, my, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Gosh, another big problem. I mean, everyone's worried. The the traffic we are working on on mitigating by having a white hawk bypass. So that's in the work. It's taking a long time. You got permits, you got engineering studies. You got the money to fund, so that's going on. But as far as the mission ordering here can do a very good job in this area. We're a bicycle city. I know I personally, when I was working at the Orange School District, I bicycled to work every day. At my new job, I bicycled to work every day and I see the trip. So first, we should also continue doing that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Todd, your your bandwidth is still low. I think you're doing the best you can. We're able to hear most of what you're saying, but not everything. So if there's anything else that you can think of about that, please do. All right, Scott, you're next for this question about the reducing green greenhouse gas emissions to reduce transportation emissions. Please, Scott.
Great, thank you. Surprisingly, one of the projects that I've been working with for over twenty years that will be happening is the pedestrian SR one sixty-two bridge. And literally the stall of traffic for children crossing the highway as a result of of school of getting to and from school is literally in the millions of pounds of CO2 emissions in in stalled traffic. So the number one way to reduce it is to get traffic moving. The bridge, the Southwest Connector, as mentioned, those are huge, huge to get in traffic flow and then also work with our regional partners to work on transportation solutions to the main transportation corridors to reduce that that idle time in the valley. The other thing is is that we've seen a dramatic change in people that are able to work from home today. And that might be a good thing that came out of the pandemic. So I would encourage policies and codes for people to work from their homes, to have businesses from their homes to keep the, to keep the economy here in ordering. We talked about the housing, shared housing in the business district. We want people living and shopping in ordering. So give them the services and the goods that they want here in ordering. They'll stay in ordering and that will reduce a tremendous amount of greenhouse gas. Utilize alternative of transportations and then also encourage alternative transportation means. So a lot of, a lot of, a lot of solutions, but it's going to take some time for us to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Don, you're up for that question about reducing transportation emissions.
Yes, thank you. One of the big things, I think, because we are more of a bedroom community where people transition out of the city to work and back. The city of Sumner and the city of Puyallup both have train depots where people catch a train to go to work in Seattle or wherever they go. I think ordering used to have, back quite a few years, used to have Pierce Transit would come out here. I think that's a big thing to work with Pierce Transit. A lot of these people drive their car from here to Sumner, park it, get on a train, go to work, get it, drive it back to here. And just that short distance creates a big issue with traffic and the emissions. And if if we could work with Pierce Transit and get them out of here at key times in the morning and in the afternoon to take those people to those train stations to where they pick up the train and they know it's going to be every day. I think we can I think we can reduce those emissions substantially. And so I would recommend that we definitely work with Pierce Transit to get those things working. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's our last question. And Don, you, you have the opportunity to answer first. How adequate do you think ordering's emergency response capacity is? Or what should it be in the event of a large earthquake flooding or an eruption of Mount Rainier?
Wow. Disasters. Yes. We have the emergency response with our firefighters, police, those things. Escape routes for Lahars, those kind of things that have been in. But that's on an individual, whether it's a Lahar, whether it's an earthquake. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the city has in place for a lot of those things. I do know we have our escape routes. We have through the school, how the kids would get to where they need to go. They practice that. I'm pretty sure that that's not the city that requires that. But it's something that the city can definitely get involved with. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd? Your response, please.
Thank you. First of all, I've tried to look into the bandwidth and, and I don't see anything that I can do on my end. So sorry.
Well, I can hear you really well right now. So go ahead.
Oh, good. So as far as emergency response system, we just, the city council just had in the Mount Rainier Big Shot Team in front of us just a couple of weeks ago. And they're talking about increasing the the sensors and making sure that they maintain a balance between early notification and not having false negatives. So a Mount Rainier is trying to do more and more and more as it can as the new technology allows it to. But it's a topic that, that we are on top of. So thank you.
Okay, and Scott, your response, please.
Thank you. Well, the city of ordering has been on the cutting edge of this for, since the mid 1990s. It was brought to our attention by the USGS of the dangers of not raining air in the Lahar. But the reality is that we're between two glacial fed rivers, Puyallup and the Carbon River. So there's also potential for flooding and bridge outages through an earthquake, that type of thing. So our best evacuation plan is pedestrian. And the city has led an annual evacuation of the city and of the school every year for the last 10 plus years of, of the city. And going back before that with the school district, we have in place a plan for two bridges to evacuate the city to get up off of the floor 30 feet. The first of the bridge evacuation system is going in this year. It's taken that long to get here, but it's been a tremendous accomplishment for us to get there. And it will be fully funded and it'll be an asset to our city as you come into our town. But the, the primary way for evacuation will be pedestrian. And the city is, is as well prepared as we, I think that we possibly can be. We were the first city in the region to have Lahar sirens. In fact, when we had the Nisqually earthquake, we, we sounded our sirens. And we learned from that experience as, as the previous speaker had spoke about with Mount Rainier sensors, to making sure that we get reliable information come from, coming from the mountain to work with Pierce County Emergency Management to make sure that we get as much time as possible to evacuate the valley floor and that our citizens are all aware and familiar with the sirens that happen in the valley and what they need to do. At one time, we handed out with every new homeowner packets for an evacuation route and information on this. And I think it's been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Now it's time for closing statements. You each have up to one minute. Scott, you'll give the first closing statement.
Thank you again for putting this on this evening. It gave us a chance to kind of showcase some of our different perspectives. And I truly hope that, that all of you will support me and my campaign to become your council person for another four-year term. I have a lot of work to do. Where like I mentioned, we are, we're putting in our first evacuation bridges, pedestrian SR162 crossing. But we also have to deal with the transportation issues, funding our transportation, getting bypasses around our city and moving transportation through our town. We need to look at alternative means to, to, to connect ourselves to Sumner and to our surrounding cities through, possibly through other transit systems and also find other codes and policies to allow for more diverse housing and for people to live and work here in the city without having to, to tax our highway system. So all of that said, I'm very thankful for my time that I've been able to serve on city council. And I would appreciate your vote for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, your closing statement for up to one minute, please.
Thank you. As I said in the beginning, I want to ensure that the future generations have a safe community here in ordering with great schools and a great place to raise their families. I think ordering is a unique town that can attract the kinds of business and grow in a, you know, in a way that will enhance our quality of life. I, we just need to move forward responsibly. And as a community, I am committed to listen and work with community members to move forward with the vision of ordering that a community is faced. And I thank you for the opportunity to do this and I hope to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Todd, your closing statement, please.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the, to the League of Women Voters as well. I just want to close by wishing everyone your well. Whoever gets in or stays in, you're going to have a very rewarding number of years. The job can be very challenging. When you get into it, it kind of seems like stepping into the middle of a blender. If you want to be honest, it'll drive you half parts crazy and laughing. But at the end, you feel like you've really done something very important with your life. And if you work really hard on it, you do some, you'll be able to do some very special things for a lot of other people as well. So good luck, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the candidates and to you who are watching. I'd like to thank our timekeeper, Terry Baker, and all our cosponsors. They're, they are the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, the Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, the South End Neighborhood Council, the Summit Waller Community Association, the Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA. They have spread the word about the forums and we appreciate their, their help. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. Before you vote on November 2nd, also check out the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, Vote 411. You can find it at www.vote411.org. And you can go to votewa.gov to check your voter registration and the status of your ballot. Both sites identify candidate information specific to your voting precinct. We encourage everyone to use these as resources in addition to the standard voters guide. Look for your ballot in your mailbox around October 17th. They'll be mailed October 15th or shortly after October 17th. Use one of the many drop boxes in our county or mail your postage paid ballot as soon as possible after you receive it. If you're not yet registered, you may register at the auditor's office right through election day. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in the ballot drop box by 8:00 PM on November 2nd. And thanks to everyone again.